Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Southboro School Committee Open Meeting, Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. The time is six thirty-two P M. We'll start as usual with public comment. Seeing no public comments, we'll move to new business.
So this evening, we have Principal Malente, who will be providing the principal report on behalf of our colleagues. So welcome.
Would you like me to stop after each school? No, but I can answer without any questions. We're just going to go ahead. Okay. At FINN, in supporting their work within community and culturally responsive teaching, Jen Henry, preschool administrator, Gisa Tavarez, preschool E L staff director, staff member, and pre-teen team created a day-long program titled Holidays Around the World. Students were issued passports and traveled from class to class, learning about Christmas. Rulerman, you can help me with this one. S. Macar, Sunprenti? Is that correct? Okay. Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Diwali, Lunar, New Year, and St. Lucius Day. St. Lucius Day. For each of the holidays mentioned, preschool parents volunteered to provide an overview of what each holiday looked like. The parents who did volunteer to provide a specific holiday overview, came dressed in their native holidays, festive attire, and wrote books about the holidays, created PowerPoints and videos, and even gave students souvenir bags upon getting their passports stamped. And FINN even had a very special parent provide an overview of Kwanzaa and its significance for her family. It was a wonderful way to showcase the rich diversity of our school community and highlight many wonderful traditions. A big thank you to the entire preschool team for strengthening our global community by bringing those rich and diverse family celebrations with parents and family participation into our classrooms and teaching students about holidays around the world. FINN is continuing to make solid progress on their work in the area of mindfulness. As mentioned previously, Emma Botanini, a licensed mindfulness teacher at Southboro resident and parent, has been working with FINN Mindfulness Committee regarding the individual classroom activities and whole school programming. So far, several classrooms within each grade have adopted daily mindfulness practice, such as yoga and meditation, the ability to accurately identify, recognize, and express their own feelings and emotions, and how physical responses can change feelings and help students and adults become more centered. Work has started on incorporating mindful practices on FINN's morning announcements, featuring videos of FINN staff modeling mindful practices. On to Woodward. Last Friday, thanks to the Woodward SOS and generous, and our generous school community, the Woodward staff and students had front row seats to an amazing being, a stunt runner and motivational speaker. Chris Pios paid attention to Woodward and spoke to the entire school about positive character traits that he lives by and how by doing so, he has learned an incredible skill. He shared stories from his childhood growing up in Rhode Island, the importance of practice, perseverance, kindness, and respecting others. The character traits he discussed are the same care themes Woodward highlights each month. As part of the work to support social emotional learning, students participated in weekly lessons centered on their monthly care themes. These lessons are planned by Woodward Behavior Specialist, S E L Crick and Bornator Jenny Bogart. This week, students discuss what it means to show self-discipline and why perseverance is important to conquering challenging tasks throughout their day. They discuss the power of positive self-talk and personal growth that happens when they show grit. Um, we had our annual book swap on December sixteenth. Students contributed gently used books and were able to swap them for a new book. As part of it, we had Cozy Comfy Cozy Day, and part of the afternoon was spent snuggling up in the room. We also finished our One School One Read, and we'll be moving on to our second read of the year, along with incorporating a variety of S E L literature that is aligned to the themes within the One School One Read. These are read-only books that are incorporated into our buddy classrooms every Tuesday and Thursday during grade level professional and community time. During our monthly whole-school meeting, one of the topics we covered was preparing our next safety drone, which we called Table Talk Safety Drone. We reviewed the difference between Alice and emergency situations. The situation and decision to enact Alice included information about an active intruder. Choice remained quiet to ensure that we hear all the information shared in order to make decisions. In an emergency situation would be events such as an injury, an ambulance vehicle, a power outage, or early dismissal. Emergency situations, dealing with no choice, students were to listen to teachers and principal directions, and in most cases, classroom instruction remained unavoidable. This week, we held our table talk discussions through teacher-led scenarios and allowed students to ask questions and engage in conversation, help them to share their thoughts and ideas. A side note to this is after we had our whole-school meeting, we talked about emergency situations, Alice drones, things such as that the next morning, when we hold, we had a power outage. So it was interesting. The students were coming in, and I could hear a few students saying, okay, so this is an emergency situation, but we're going to go right to our classroom. They were able to reach right in the learning that was happening in the darkness, but it was happening. So it was timely that we were able to do that. And we completed that today, and then we went to families this afternoon.
Power came back, huh?
The power came back, and learning did not cease. Trotier. On December twenty-second, our seventh grade students, with the generous support of SOS, attended Christmas Carol at the Hinnover Theater in Worcester. The viewing of the play was an excellent capstone view to the Charles Dickens unit in our seventh grade classes. Our students were appreciative of the experience and helped reinforce the novel by seeing the play from the line on stage. Trotier picked off its first ever Trotier Reads Challenge. Mrs. Allenson and students from her media literacy class cleared this initiative. Students and faculty are asked to pull out an Google form each time they finish a book or reading it or listening to an audio book. Mrs. Allenson will track the number of books that have been read, and students and staff will have the opportunity to make recommendations to others as part of this work. In addition, there will be prizes and recognition during this challenge. The Trotier Reads Challenge is a great way to support the love of reading as a school and community.
Very good. Katara?
I don't have any questions, but I always like to say how much I love to hear the updates and so many great things happening that's really wonderful about the holidays exposition at FINN. It's really lovely and part of our values and what we're trying to accomplish. So it's great. Thank you so much.
Castle, we'll take you.
How long was the power out? Not long, yeah.
An hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
So that gave.
Enough to make it interesting.
Enough to make a difference, right.
Everybody rallied. It was great. I think it was a good, good exercise on the response to it. It was everything is all of work and we have them. Thanks, you can.
All right, thank you. Legislative update?
So just a quick update. I've been communicating with the committee that the Operational Services Division did increase private school tuition by fourteen percent. We talked about the factors that they included in their reasoning is difficult hiring staff, also retaining staff, and also the inflationary costs that they are experiencing. So we are also experiencing those same impacts to our F Y twenty-four and F Y twenty-three budgets. We did submit a letter to our legislative delegation advocating for a reduction in that fourteen percent increase because it's just not sustainable. That was not considered, so fourteen percent is what it will be. And our shift in terms of advocacy has moved to trying to recapture that funding or that increase in circuit breaker. And we're working closely with the Mass Association of School Superintendents, the Mass Association of School Committees, and we'll be submitting more letters stating our concern and the fact that that's just not sustainable or tenable for districts across the Commonwealth, including Southboro.
Discouraging?
Discouraging. And that is it for legislative updates.
M S B A updates?
So just a new update that we received this week. So we had submitted all of our reports that were required before we left for December break. We did hear this week that M S B A is scheduling an enrollment meeting to review enrollment numbers and for them to better understand where we are and what our concerns might be looking for in terms of enrollment projections. That is scheduled for January nineteenth, from ten to twelve virtually. So we will be holding that meeting, and that is the last of our responsibilities before M S B A decides whether or not to move it down from eligibility to feasibility. So we are in a great position, and we will have an update in February around how the enrollment meeting goes. And there are no new updates on the M S B A accelerated repair program other than just reminding the committee that the M S B A did pause their accelerated repair program for this year as a result of inflationary costs of outstanding projects. So they are taking no new projects on for the next year. We had hoped to resubmit some statements of interest for accelerated repair projects, specifically Trotier roof, FINN roof, but we will be pushing that out of here. I did want to just kind of make a general comment that we did make a repair, as we had indicated at the last meeting, to the Trotier roof. We had a section of roof that was accelerated in terms of it leaking. So we had a contractor out at the last meeting we had. They were actually in the process that they were there. They finished that day and we're pleased to report that it has had its intended outcome, which is no leaking classrooms in parts of the roof that were repaired. And unfortunately, we've had significant rain, so it's been, it's been tested multiple times over the past several weeks. So the repair has been a success.
Questions? Multilingual learner data presentation?
Yes, so this evening, we have Rhoda Webb, who is our Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity. So she is here to provide her annual update and report, and welcome, Rhoda.
Thank you.
And we'll help you get connected and.
Yes. So, good evening. It is a pleasure to be with you here to give the yearly update about our multilingual learner education program in the town of Southboro. I will start with showing a few of the guidance documents that we are required to implement as a district. Of course, there are federal laws that we follow too as well. And the two Massachusetts Blue Trinket for L Success and the L Data Dashboard is full of information as well provided by the Department of Education. And of course, we are addressing more than two, but especially two of our strategic objectives, which are empowering learners and equity of opportunity for our multilingual learners. So very simplistic definition provided by the state is that an English learner is a student whose first language is not English and who is currently not able to perform ordinary classroom in English, ordinary classwork, sorry, in English. Federal definition is a lot more involved than that, but as you will see, it takes, it is much deeper than what this definition provides. So the point of entry of our multilingual learner program is a home language survey. So if a family indicates there is a language in addition or other than English mentioned in the home language survey, the guidance says that we need to do a language proficiency screening for the student just to ensure that the student's English is rich enough to be able to access the content that is happening in the classroom. So before we really do a language proficiency screening, we have conversations with the family because every family knows that children are the best. And so we talk to the family about the use of languages and their values and how language is tied to culture and in what environments they're using language inside the school, in their communities, in everyday life. The language proficiency screenings that we do use are at the preschool level, is called preless, and for kindergarten through grade twelve, it's a WIDA screener. These are required, the WIDA screener is required by the Department of Education, and the preless is also one of the options provided by the Department of Education. Should a student meet the criteria to qualify to receive English language development instruction, the parents are sent a placement letter explaining and also a phone call. And that letter will go out in English and will be translated for families who need a translated version of documents. So what we'll go to now is what the information that I provide every year, which are the district trends, of population, home languages, proficiency levels, and our staffing. And the photos that I'm providing, this is from our summer program when children are learning to observe, and also from other photos belong to children working inside the E L D classroom. So the first one, if we look at, several years have been skipped so that everything can fit on one graph. But if you look at the two thousand and four, two thousand and five is when we started counting multilingual learners or English learners in Southboro. And if you look at all the way to the far right, you will see that the darker bar, in the fall, there were eighty students who qualified to receive English language development instruction. The total, a lot of work happens in September, and so out of eighty-seven students that the English language development teachers screened, thirty-six percent of thirty students qualified as new multilingual learners for the program. We have had three other students join now in January, so the number is up to eighty-three, and we do anticipate more students joining us. The lighter bar, which says fifty-one, those are the students who have been reclassified, you could say graduated from the program, and we must monitor them for four academic years. So we're looking at a total that the English language development, either they are instructing or they're monitoring students for a total of a hundred and thirty-four students. The good news is that what is, we reclassified twenty-three students from last year. So they met the criteria, as I'm going to explain the criteria. So this is fluid every year. There's not the same students that we're talking about all the time, and the students that move in and students that move out as well. As regards languages, we have added some languages from the students who are multilingual learners and those who have been reclassified from the program. And you see that the top five are still Chinese, Portuguese, Russian, Arabic, and this year Urdu. Spanish close by. And so this ensures a richness of languages and cultures in Southboro. And we do get to know the families well. We know what they value, the use of the languages I have indicated. And together with this, we do, we are required for families who need translation. Deb Young, who's a multilingual learner specialist, does a fantastic job in ensuring that all our schools and that we all know the families who need translation, which is the written documents received in their language and also interpretation. For example, at parent-teacher conferences or at any meetings, and the top five languages for which we're interpreting and translating are Chinese, Portuguese, Russian, and Arabic. And we're doing that for a total of twenty-nine students for interpretation and twenty-five families for translation. And the wonderful thing about this is that all families have access to their child's education. This next graph just shows you, again, this is fluid, so this was frozen in the fall to be able to analyze it. So you will see that at the foundational level, which is Levels One, meaning a student not speaking any English, to a low developing, which is speaking in short phrases and in phrases and short sentences. I'm going to look for my percentages so I don't have to, yes. There are almost twenty-six percent at the foundational level. Those students require more intense English language development instruction, and we have seventy-four percent at the transitional level, which means that as the students now will be taking access, which I'll explain in a minute, we will be looking at those scores to be able to reclassify students from the program. And all students, they need to be instructed, no matter the language proficiency level. So you see in this bullet, these are a few of the profiles. Every student is unique, but these are a few of the examples that students, the students that we work with. We have students who are newcomers, who come into the country and probably are within the first six to twelve months, they're learning English, they're learning about the culture, the schooling. Everything is different as they have moved to the United States. English learners also are duly qualified sometimes, of course, English learners who have disabilities, long-term English learners, if they're in the program for more than six years, students that come with limited or interrupted formal schooling, for whatever reason that might be, and the pandemic can be a very good reason according to where the students were, and former English learners, once we have reclassified them. So the program model that we have in our district is called sheltered English immersion or structured English immersion, and it is two components which are a requisite. Sheltered content instruction, that's what happens in the classroom and in the content areas like at middle school, where you've got the licensed teacher for the content area or the classroom teacher, and the students are accessing grade-level content, and the students are there throughout the day in the classroom. The other component, and they're very intrinsically linked, is the English as a Second Language or English Language Development Program, which is a requirement. It has to be taught by an E S L licensed teacher. And the instruction that needs to happen is systematic, explicit, and sustained, and focused on language and literacy. And it has to be based on the WIDA frameworks, the curriculum frameworks, and we do have to have a curriculum and units that we follow, and that is something that the department looks for in the time of when they do audits to our district. There's a specific amount of time in the day that it happens, and it is taught by English language development teachers. In our, in Southboro, as we had mentioned, that was one of the last items on my list. Kathleen had mentioned the holiday traditions at FINN and mentioned Mrs. Tavarez. So she is our bilingual E S P at the preschool level. At FINN School, during, because of the number of students that we have this year, two of our English language development teachers are instructing at FINN, and that's Mrs. Becknami and Mrs. Abuzer. At Woodward, it's Mrs. Pierceall. At Neary, Mrs. Cross. Mrs. Cross is also working half of the day at Woodward School this year because of the higher numbers at Woodward. And at Trotier, we have Mrs. Wickstead. And I had mentioned Deb Young as the multilingual learner specialist of our program who takes care of all the interpretation and translation, all the logistics of the program, accountability, the finance of the program as well. So I have been mentioning curriculum. So this is just a very overall picture of what the standards, that's actually a picture of the, 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 the big notebook. Everything's online, of course, and those are the four big ideas that you can see in the standards. They are connected to our content standards that we have in the classroom as well. And I just want to give you a snapshot of what a unit looks like. The other thing that we do in when we are writing our units is that we're connecting them to the castle framework. So to give you an idea of what happens, this is a unit at the elementary level, water for everybody. What would happen in the, what does happen in the English language development classroom is that we are focusing on the language in listening, speaking, reading, and writing of explaining for this unit. So what is involved in needing to explain something? We also develop academic and content area vocabulary. We're talking about the tier-one words, the everyday words that one knows because you've grown up speaking them since a young child. Also, those words that go across content areas, for example, table, the table in math, the table in geography, the structures that are needed, of course, in effect, adverbial phrases. Then you have what happens in the classroom. Everybody's learning about landforms, and that will be the tier-three, so the specific vocabulary that has to do with landforms, and of course, there is more to that. And there you see the self competencies that we are addressing in this unit. So this is a very simplistic view, but to give an idea of how we are building a student's English language proficiency, no matter what level they are. Of course, we are held accountable for the work that we do with our students. Our students receive report cards and English language development progress reports. At this time, the access, which is the state testing for English learners, is taking place. The window opens January sixth. It will close February tenth. And the reason it is so important is that that's the only measure that we can look at to reclassify students. Of course, we are looking at other measures once they get to that level to be able to reclassify or graduate a student for the program. And of course, children, no matter the language proficiency level, take M-PAS as from grade three. So to give you an overall from the access reports, we get district data, school rosters, individual student rosters, and that's what the parents receive. This is an example of what a parent receives. It is one sheet. You will see the four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and then broken up into oral language, literacy comprehension, and vocabulary. So this student is between a Level Two and a Level Three. The overall, they're just almost at a developing stage. And underneath, below, the, below, the, the, the part at the bottom will tell a parent what it means to score at a Level Three, at a Level Two, at a Four, or the Five. So this is just one sample of a report. This goes home also translated to parents who need translation. So the procedures are the same in all of our schools. Those access reports arrive, they're mailed home to parents. We look at the reclassification criteria. If children have met that criteria, then we're looking as well as classroom information, especially their writing and their reading levels. We take a look at M-PAS, but M-PAS is not what we're basing our reclassification on. Phone calls and letters are sent home to parents. They're translated when needed. And then those are the students that we monitor for four academic years. So some highlights of the program is the bond of trust that we form with our families. It is very important that we get to know our families, that no assumptions whatsoever are made. We get to know them, what is important to them, about their children, their families. We get to know them, what is important to them, about their children, their family structure, and we're bringing all our families in for parent teacher conferences and for other meetings as well. Another highlight is that we have new resources for grades one through eight, which are very, really much better than what we had, which address cultural competency, social justice. You can see all of our students reflected, and the materials are very good. We went through a very detailed analysis of them and even looked at the equity rubric that we had to see if they met the criteria. So we're very happy to bring that in, and we're revamping our curriculum based on our new resources. Another highlight that already is our summer, and the after-school program is Malacan, it's not here at Tradiar, but our after-school program is funded by Title III entirely. Most of the grant goes to our summer program. And as you know, this year, we were able to offer buses. We do have a new student management system this year for English learners called Elevation, and it's been very exciting to have that because all our data, which was in spreadsheets, now is readily accessible in the platform, and we have several years of information on students. We're also very proud of the language access for interpreters and translations. That means that we give access to our families, to everything that's going on in the schools through our very skilled interpreters and translators. In December, with Mr. Martinau, we started our LPAC, and that was very exciting, and we have another meeting in February. So, and definitely the collaboration, this happens as a community. It happens in the school with a principal, with everybody involved, with the classroom teachers, subject teachers, counselors, the special student support team, everybody that is involved, we're all working together for the sake of our students and our families. So that is the presentation for tonight, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Rhoda. Let me start, well, just getting seated. So I know we've been doing this for a while, and we've got a number of years of this. And I'm gonna, I may make a couple of statements that are just plain wrong, so please correct me. Okay? Seems that the, seems that determining whether a student is eligible for the program is important.
Yes.
And I sort of take from that, that means that the process that's used to make that determination would also be important. And this is, it seems like it's not a science as much as maybe an art. I know it's, what was the word? To do ordinary work in English or in a classroom? Ordinary seems also a little subjective to me, so.
Yes.
Without really trying to understand the process itself, do things, I have to imagine that we're going to miss sometimes, right? In other words, it's sometimes it may be that somebody should have been in the program, but because of the process of trying to make that determination, they weren't, or maybe even the reverse, which potentially seems easier because maybe they move out of the program. But do, from year to year, do you learn things? In other words.
Yes.
You know what? Based on what we learned last year, this is one of the modifications we might want to make to increase our success rate of making these determinations correctly. Okay? I'm just curious about that. Okay?
Yeah. It's a really good question. So, for example, September is an incredibly busy month, and at that point, we're always looking at, are we making the right decision? We have the screener, but are we making the right decision? So it'll involve observing the student in the classroom, talking to the family. It's incredibly important to us so that we don't make the, so that we can make a decision that is right by the student.
And I forgot to mention, I think this has got to be incredibly difficult also to actually go through.
It takes a lot of collaboration and a lot of collaboration, and a lot of talking, a lot of observing, analyzing the results of the screener. But a student, for example, may not qualify in the fall, but then may be struggling in the classroom later on. So we take a look at the student again. And so we can, especially at the kindergarten level, you know, when we're only looking at listening and speaking because that's what the department says to do. But in January, we can look at the four language domains. So it's, we're always in collaboration with classroom teachers and subject teachers. If a student is struggling, first we look at, what did we miss? And the idea is every year, how can we be more efficient? So we do, you know, think about that and do make adjustments from year to year. I don't know if I've answered your question fully.
Certainly. And so I think the thing I don't quite understand is how much adjustment do you or can you make during the year? Is it whatever? Or is it, or are there, you know, you're kind of locked into certain decisions you make early on, and you try to manage that as well as you can?
So as regards having wrong decisions, in what way are you thinking?
I mean, I'm not sure there's a true right or wrong.
Right.
Except that, you know, somebody that maybe, maybe should have been in the program and wasn't, okay?
Yeah.
Or, wow, they didn't necessarily really need it as much as someone else.
Right.
I don't know if there's a limit on numbers or.
Yes.
I mean, you only have so many resources, you know, to try to, to try to.
It's as if you were working with us, actually, because when we, we might say, we're going to watch the student, we're going to give the student, especially the very young children at Finn, right? So we're going to watch the child, let the child be in the classroom, you know, gather some more information, and then see if the student actually needs it. Because it's a screener, we may not have the true picture, we know that. And we might readminister it, you know? Or we might say, you know what, this was not a good day, this is not a true picture of who the student is. So we're not going by what is, you know, what happened one day at a certain time, and that is it. We're gathering a lot of information, and we will reassess or reevaluate for the sake of the child.
That makes sense.
Yes.
That's right, that makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you.
And if someone qualified and it wasn't right, we will, you know, we will, we will change that. Yes.
All right, thank you.
But I like that you said it looked more like an art than a sci, than science, because that's, we're working with children, so we definitely, is that.
Anybody have anything? Come on.
Early on, the deck, there were some slides with bar graphs on them.
Yes.
And under the bar graph, it had some values around time. So I noticed, so the bars closest to the right, the seventy-five percent, it said some X amount of hours. What does that represent? And then there was a different set of hours for the other children.
So it's, it's, it's time per week.
Okay.
So at the higher levels, it's less time per week.
Okay.
And at the foundational level, they can go anywhere from a period a day or two to three periods a day, especially if they're really real beginners, to a full day. Actually, nobody is getting a full day of English language development instruction, but the idea is the lower the language proficiency, the more specific specialized English language development instruction, and the higher levels is less time.
Victoria?
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. I, you know, you do this every year, and it's always so amazing, such a great presentation. I feel like this had more information or different information that.
A little more.
Yeah, yeah, it was really excellent. I think it gave us a really good sort of insight into how this all works. And it prompted a question for me, which is, two questions, actually. So is there sort of an average amount of time, I guess, probably a curve, you know, how long it takes for like a new student to go from all through the foundational and then through all the traditional phases?
Yes. So average, every child is different, and it will really depend on how well they know their home language and at what age they start. But the average is five to seven years, although it depends on so many factors that we're very aware of. And it depends on when that, interestingly enough, it can be easier for a child who already has literacy in their first language and will come to the United States without any English, but a strong foundation in reading and writing, if they are able to have that, they will learn a second language faster. So, you know, at the younger age, they will learn the pronunciation, they get their articulation, and you know, that is easier, but it depends on so many factors. But that's an average that is put out.
Yes, yeah, interesting. Yeah, that's what I was looking for, sort of a general idea, that's interesting. And then the other thing I was wondering, so the same slide that I think Kamali was talking about, the, for the foundational levels, it's seven point five hours, I think it says, or something, per week, and then three point seven five for the other three. Are all of those hours in the EL classroom, like in a different classroom, or some of them in the, their main classroom?
So it can be both.
Okay.
And we have to maximize, because our ELD teachers right now, they're, the amount of children that they work with is quite a lot. It's mostly in the ELD classroom because we're working on that, and then the students can perform better in the classroom. But it definitely can be a combination of both.
Interesting. Yeah, I mean, this was really interesting, because I think it really brought it to life and you can see how complex this is.
Yes, yes. So it can have, it happens in both settings, and it just depends on scheduling and everything that's happened. But co-teaching is another thing that we're really interested in. It also depends on the amount of students that each teacher is working with.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have one question. Have you noticed any differences over the pandemic with the rate in which kids are transitioning out of the program or becoming more proficient?
So the pandemic has affected children, you know? Some children were able to, as you saw, we were able to reclassify twenty-three students, so that is a very good number, healthy number, right? And they have to meet that criteria to reclassify them. So we have seen children affected, especially, you know, children have not been in preschool, some of our children have not been in preschool. They've come to kindergarten or first grade without having any schooling, and that, we do see that. Or they've moved to our area and they weren't, you know, our children were in school four days a week during the, but that has not happened in every, even if they lived within the States or outside the States, if they were remote, we do see the larger gaps. Yes. Thank you for that question, it's an important one.
Good.
Could I make just a couple of comments?
Please.
So three points, and if I could make four, then.
Okay.
Drop me a three. First, I think Rhoda and ELD team and classroom teachers do an amazing job at building relationships with families. They know our ELD staff very well. It's very evident when you see families interact with either Rhoda or ELD teachers or our classroom teachers. A lot of work is spent, in times spent, building trust, and that's really evident in the work that we observe day to day. And the second point is really around the, you know, we saw twenty-eight languages, the coordination of interpretation, you know, for whether it's special education meetings or parent teacher conferences, or whatever it might be, is a tremendous effort. And our ELD team and Deb Young has done a great job, having a cadre of interpreters who are ready to help families get the information of their preferred language. And then in terms of translation, so with the addition of Parentsware, so Rhoda was instrumental in helping us look at our unified communication tool. One of the criterion we were looking at for a strong tool was making sure that interpretation or translation was seamless. So now parents are getting all communications in their preferred language, which is, was not something we've done, were able to do easily in the past. So that's part of Rhoda's great work. And then just lastly, in terms of, I think when we look at the number of students, you know, we can look at, you know, we have more students over time, but the number of students, the sum or the total only tells one story. I think you had mentioned, when you look at the foundational level, the time that it takes for a student at the foundational level on our ELD staff. So we could get three students at the foundational level and require five ELD teachers to add to our cadre of educators, and we could get fifty who are at level five, and we might not need to add staff. So I think it's just part of the work that we do, looking at the numbers. It's not always the total, the sum, it's who are kids and where they are in terms of the levels. So, but I think Rhoda and her team does an amazing job in concert with classroom teachers and principals, and are very fortunate to have such a robust and thriving program.
Can I add one point to that?
You're the fourth point.
I'm the fourth point. In addition to all of that, I think Rhoda and her team play a really important role in terms of that sense of inclusivity and welcoming and belonging all of our families, whether they're part of the ELD program or not. The teachers in Rhoda's department are real leaders in the schools in terms of whether it's special events or just that, building trusting relationships and making our schools home for everyone. So I think that's noteworthy as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
All business, which we have none of at this time. Did you want to invite all the principals?
Yes, so.
Who may or may not have an interest in the superintendent's report.
She may. She's more than welcome to stay, but if it's her wish, you can also begin her evening.
Or end my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a night.
We are moving to the superintendent's report.
Sure. So in your packet, here's the enrollment report as of December sixteenth. Just that, we had one, one student enroll since the last report that was presented in November. I will point out that when you look at the projections for FY twenty-four, when you look at the number of teachers, we've not moved staffing forward with the grade levels. So those are the current staffing levels we have. That is some work that we need to do moving forward in terms of the budget process, and I'll speak to that a little bit more, in more detail when I give the revised preliminary budget presentation. Also note that the K number at this point in time, we have seventy-one kindergartners enrolled. That number changes over time as we get closer to the spring and summer, but it is a number we watch very closely, and oftentimes it's hard to project. We had a hundred and forty kindergartners enrolled this year, which was more than we were anticipating. So my point is, we're watching it very closely. Right now, the number seems less than we had anticipated, but over time, we're projecting that number should be around one fifteen, one twenty-five. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there are none, I will move on to the next topic, which is actually the next three topics, which I will turn it over to Becky Pellegrino. So Becky will provide an update on the FY twenty-three monthly general fund expenditure report, grant update, and the revolving fund accounts.
Okay, so I'm happy and actually almost mystified to report that we are halfway through the fiscal year. So we have completed, the report that's in your packet does reflect the first six months of FY twenty-three. As of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, we had seven hundred, sorry, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, sorry about that, or three point four six percent remaining on the bottom line. At the same point in time last year, we had just under five hundred thousand, or two point two nine percent remaining. So we're really starting to keep an eye on our teacher and nursing substitute line items because we. because we are seeing those get close to what we had originally budgeted for this year. And these line items that we're watching are in addition to the utilities that we were already monitoring for FY '23. But overall, I think we're trending in a positive, in a positive position. And that I welcome any questions that you may have.
Question, are you seeing, and I'm not sure you might, you probably can answer this, but that this issue of substitute teachers, given the fact that we're going back in a spike with increase, are you seeing increased teachers out now within the last like month or so? You think that's going to drive up?
Yeah, we have seen an uptick over the past month. I would say we just closed out our payroll. So I haven't seen the the first two weeks of January yet because we're just finalizing that. But I would say in December, we did see a slight uptick.
And actually, Mary Ellen is in the audience. So she monitors both student and faculty. So Mary Ellen, I'm not sure if you want to provide a brief update on where our attendance numbers, pre-break and then post-break.
So pre-break, our numbers.
Do you want to come up to the?
We need to make it worth your while that you're here.
So pre-break, our numbers were somewhat low. And for the two weeks before break, we start, there were a few schools in Northborough that were really low. So we were monitoring them very closely. And it was more influenza-like illnesses and flu and some COVID interspersed here and there. So we started monitoring all the schools. And the week before break, they were low, and that's a hard week to do because of vacations and travel. So we did an adjusted, I don't know if anybody looked at the dashboard, but there was the attendance rate and then an adjusted rate, which took out the travel and non-medical or non-illness-related absences. So it ended up being about 93. This week after break, our numbers are 96% of the district. I think there are a few schools in Southborough that had illnesses right after Thanksgiving, right before and after Thanksgiving break. And then, but the numbers have been pretty steady in the mid 90s since then. We did hear from some principals today that the staff numbers are a little bit elevated since returning from break, but nothing really that isn't being able to be covered for now.
Thank you.
And we're still, we still are operating the policy. If it goes below 92%, it kind of triggers a, I guess, a discussion or meeting. But it doesn't look like we, you know, we're near that at all at this point.
So we continue to meet with the medical advisory team every other week. And we do bring up the attendance every time we meet.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
You're welcome.
Now, before we move on, would you like to, would you like to have a vote?
Yes, please.
On the expenditure report, okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the Southborough Public School District's fiscal year 2023 budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of December 31st, 2022 until audit.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's a virtual time. Moved by Katura, second by Kamali. Any questions? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Good. In terms of our grants, we really did not see much of a change in SR2 over the past month. However, we did have a small expenditure in our SR3 grant, and that was for an additional Red Cat system at the, and that's the voice simplification system that they use at the Finn School. And then during the fiscal year '24 budget presentation, Greg will provide a little bit more information on our plans to utilize the SR3 funds. In terms of the revolving accounts, you'll see that I have included the information for the facility rental as well as the extended day program. During the month of December, we did receive $72,000 in revenues in the facility rental account. And the additional expenditures in that account are reflective of the repairs that we had anticipated on the Trotter roof. For the extended day program, we have collected 400 and just about $419,000 in fiscal year '23. And our expenses have been just over $289,000. So our salary and our expense, expenses continue to remain in line with what we had anticipated for the program.
I have a question. So can you remind me, are the the payments for extended day for after-school, are they more front-loaded? I know some, some folks would pay as they go, I guess.
It's usually a monthly payment.
So there's not much front-loading in these numbers.
Correct, correct.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
So next in your packet is the capital plan, which was approved in December. I will make a note on the Trotter Middle School, specifically the row mill and pave, paving of the parking lot at Trotter. That was listed in the FY '25 column as a project to take on. Mark Purple and the town did submit their paving contract or bid for the entire town and included Trotter as an ad alternate to see what type of pricing we would get for that particular project. As a result of the bid coming back, it came a little over $200,000, which is about half of what we had anticipated the cost would be. So our intention is to continue to work with the town and actually move forward with that project in the summer and use facilities revolving account to fund that that project. So I'll provide, Mr. Boyle will provide more information about that project as I move forward and as we get more detailed. But we thought it was an excellent opportunity, one that we were not anticipating. We were actually thinking that it would be more than $400,000. So it's a good news story.
It's a rare moment in today's world.
Yeah, I just have a question on whether we need a vote on any part of that tonight. I know, I mean, just full disclosure, so that we, there was no time to kind of object to the town's request that they, you know, go ahead and go forward, at least as far as they've gone. But that really means that something that we had in the next, where's it, 2025? That's where we had it. So now it's going to be moved to 2024, presuming we 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 vote as such. We'll have to. And I guess if we if we don't want to do that, then other things will happen. But that's, there was literally no time to object because they had to make a decision right then. And we couldn't even call a meeting, you know, to, so we were kind of sitting there as no objection. But I think we need to, you know, to proactively confirm that we're okay with moving that into 2024. Is that fair?
It is. I mean, I think we can do, I think the committee can take this up in two ways. It could amend the capital plan. It also, we also could bring forward the actual costs in more detail at the February meeting for an official vote for us to use revolving accounts to fund paving projects or maybe vote.
If we use the revolving, I mean, the plan is to use the revolving plan.
Correct.
The plan is to use the revolving plan. It's still a capital expense that was in the 2005 time period.
Correct.
So is waiting, is waiting to February to actually deal with this maybe the sensible thing to do?
I think so because.
Now you're aware of it?
It is, so we have our monthly budget meeting, joint meeting with the select board chair, town administrator, finance team. Becky Palaquino, myself, and Roger tomorrow morning. This is one of the topics that we were, I was planning to discuss to get more information around how they anticipate for, and we'll proceed with the bid and the procurement. And we'll have more information for the February meeting.
Are you all good with that? Yes, Katura, and any questions, please?
Yeah, no, just a a comment, which is that, you know, we have absolutely nothing in the FY '24 capital column. And that always struck me as a little odd. But I think, you know, the rationale was that there wasn't anything that was sort of at an emergency or breaking point. But we know that the parking lot definitely needs to be done. And I think the idea was it wasn't an emergency, so we weren't going to, you know, push for it. But if it makes sense to bundle it with other projects from the town and it's a reasonable price and all of that, I think it makes all the sense in the world. So just.
Getting it down to half price also along with, now we'll have something in that time period. Other questions or comments about that? All right, so we'll learn more tomorrow morning, I guess. And and this will be back on the, this will be on the agenda for February.
So also in your packet is the document that includes FY '24 budget priorities, the FY '24 budget calendar. And lastly, this evening, I'll present the FY '24 revised preliminary budget. I just will note that last year, the operational budget subcommittee did meet on December 19th. So it's been a couple of weeks. At that time, we reviewed the preliminary budget and got some direction. So this evening, we will present the revised. I will comment that typically at this point in time, we're presenting the recommended budget to the school committee for an actual vote. We are about a month off of where we typically are. And I'll just note that primarily the reason is because we are in contract negotiations. We're still waiting for better numbers from the state. And we continue to work closely with the town to understand, better understand the town's economic climate and position. So the recommended budget will be presented in February. That is the target. So just give me one second to get connected. All right, so so this evening, I do not plan to go through all of the slides. I'll go through some of the key slides and highlight some of just the key information. I think it's always important to begin by talking about that our organization is mission and vision driven. It's all about students and how we can make sure that we're providing students with the best experience possible and be prepared for the world of college career or life beyond Aldon Regional High School. So when we make decisions, we think about students. Although there are dollar signs behind the work that we do, it's really about people and helping prepare our students for the next level of work. So the budget is a process. So it is hard to believe that it's January in terms of the budget process. I also think it's important to note that as we move through the process, we get better data so we can present better information to the school committee. This year, it's been unique in the sense that with contract negotiations, also the changing of the guard in terms of the new governor. The governor has more time to create the governor's budget, which will be due end of February. So the fiscal climate and economic condition of the state is not known, which makes it a little bit more challenging in terms of making some projections at the town level or at the school level. But the month of February and March will be key in terms of making sure we're presenting a recommended budget in November for in preparation for the town meeting. So budget variables. So again, just briefly, the collective bargaining. Earlier, we spoke about out-of-district special education tuition increase of 14%. Special education transportation, so the finance department, working closely with the support services department, is is working to get a better transportation number and doing some projections. We do know that we are anticipating increased energy costs, that the town's energy contract expires in, at the end of October. So this is a factor that we have to take into consideration. And then lastly, just the inflationary impact of on costs of goods, supplies, materials, and services. We are seeing a significant impact to the budget process. So whether this will change or head in the right direction, we're hopeful. We are seeing some signals that inflation is going in the right direction, but it's hard to project what it will be in the fall. Just in terms of the work that we do and thinking about the budget. So we have a level funded budget and a level services budget. Typically, as a school system, as an organization, as a school committee, we move forward a level services budget with incremental growth in targeted areas. We always try to improve from a year-to-year basis with a level services budget. And we, since my tenure and my experience working in this system, we have not had to have a level funded budget, which means funding the budget the same amount that was funded in the prior fiscal year, which would require cuts to staffing, not increase any positions and so forth. The budget that I'm presenting this evening, the revised preliminary, is what I would call a level services budget in most areas. Some incremental growth in targeted areas in terms of curriculum resources and some considerations in terms of staffing that the school committee will need to make some decisions around as we move forward in the next few weeks. Approved budget priorities. So in addition to our strategic plan, Vision 2026, Educate, Inspire, and Challenge, we have the school committee's budget priorities. These are essential in terms of us as a district making decisions around what to fund or what to reduce. And not every district has budget priorities that are established by the school committee. So these are extremely helpful as a leadership team when we're talking about what we're trying to accomplish and using these budget parties to make decisions as we move through the process. So where are we as of today? So the last time that I presented the preliminary budget in December, we presented an 8.73% increase to the fiscal year '23 budget. Since the that presentation, the leadership team, principals, Dr. Ryan Horn, the finance team has done a tremendous amount of work really thinking about where can we bring in a budget that is fiscally responsible and educationally sound? As a result of many conversations and work, this evening, we are presenting a 3.99% budget increase as the revised preliminary, which represents an increase of $888,983 over fiscal year '23. Just in terms of a reference point, where were we at this time last year? So in January, at this time, I was presenting to the school committee a recommended budget of 2.53%. We were in a very different position at this time last year in terms of the preliminary budget and the recommended budget. I would characterize this budget season as much more challenging than than last year. And some of the decisions we make, that we need to make this year, we didn't have to make last year in terms of the budget process. Just in terms of a reference point, in thinking about an increase for fiscal year '23, so a 1% increase for fiscal year '23 is a little over $220,000. And this is kind of a good benchmark for us as we think about adding or reducing physicians. This gives us a sense of where we need to go. So to get to a 1% budget from the revised budget, revised preliminary budget, we'd have to reduce another $666,139. And you can see 2%, 3%, 4%. we'd have to reduce another $666,139 and you can see 2%, 3%, 4%. So right now, we're at that 4% mark, a little under 4%. So from the preliminary budget to the revised preliminary, we've done a lot of work in terms of looking more closely and analyzing our faculty and staff and thinking about the human resources impact. So the revised preliminary has went from $1.1 million to 600, a little under $650,000. And that is work that the finance department did go in line and align them through the staffing budget. Add a district, district collaborative in tuitions. We went from 609 preliminary to revised preliminary to $971. Transportation for special education remains constant. We did add from the preliminary to the revised preliminary, we did add the ELA curriculum resources to the revised preliminary and then electricity. So the finance team did an analysis of what the increased electricity cost for fiscal year 24 would be. And that number is $80,000, a little under $80,000. So preliminary to revised preliminary difference is $1,036,105. So in terms of budget offsets, preliminary to revised preliminary, so circuit breaker, special education tuition reimbursement offset. So it's 1.6, a little over 1.6 million in preliminary to 1.4 million in revised preliminary. Circuit breaker, special education transportation reimbursement offset remained at $73,788. This is the transportation reimbursement through the Student Opportunity Act. And again, this is some of the advocacy that we need to do as a school committee and as a district of funding the Student Opportunity Act at a higher rate that currently is being funded. And lastly, there was no change from retirement and leave of absences from the December presentation to this evening. I will share that the deadline for announcing retirements or leave of absences is January 15th. So, which is Monday, so there could be some changes. But typically, we have learned about the retirements or leave of absences at this point in time. So the revised preliminary budget offsets totals a little over $1.6 million. And Becky, do you want to talk about the budget offsets?
Sure. And so these are some additional budget offsets that we've identified since we had presented the preliminary budget. So we have looked at some special education adjustments. We have been working with Marie and her team. And we've actually done an analysis going forward into FY25 and FY26, looking at some of our students. And in FY25, we are seeing that we will have a large number of students who are either going to age out or graduate at that point in time. And so by looking at that, we have determined that we will be able to utilize some additional circuit breaker funds that we would receive in FY24 that we would normally apply to FY25, but we feel that that savings, we would be able to capture those funds. We've also looked at some additional salary increases and cost of living. Again, as Greg said, by looking at some of the positions that we have in the budget. We've looked at using SOR 3 and we'll get into more details later in this presentation on some of the areas where we think we can use SOR 3 to offset some of the expenses that were included in this budget. And then finally, we've looked at, in collaboration with NASA and the principals, we've looked at the reduction of some Unit A positions that are currently in this budget. And we feel that they are, some that will not be, I would say, a huge impact to our student population at this time.
A Unit A position is again?
That's, so that would be the Self-Roam Teachers Association.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so those new offsets that we've identified, those subtotal $863,000. And so between these new offsets, as well as the offsets that Greg spoke about, in total, $2.5 million from the preliminary, or I guess from the initial budget.
So at this point in time, the revised preliminary budget is $23,173,426, which represents a 3.99% increase over fiscal year 23 for is a budget increase of $888,983. So what are the fiscal year 24 impacts of the reduction? So I think Becky mentioned the reduction of four Unit A positions, which are four educators. So I'll speak to these. I think this is where it's still a process and we've not identified specifically these positions. So we are not ready this evening to talk about what those positions are and what the impact would be. I will share that we are looking at the reduction of positions through attrition, through retirements. Also, we added two classroom educators as a result of increased enrollment. We are looking more closely at our enrollment projections for fiscal year 24. And that is an area where we'll look closely to see if we can continue to maintain class size according to the school committee's policy without impacting the student experience. So in terms of the reduction of the four Unit A positions, I think it's too early to go into any detail. And over the next several weeks, we'll get more information around kind of the economic climate at the town level, the state level, to see if this is something that we actually need to move forward with a recommended budget. So I think Becky mentioned that part of the impact is utilization of fiscal year 24 circuit breaker funds. So typically, the process has been we've spent circuit breaker in year two, the window to expend those funds, which allows us to better budget in the fiscal year. So we're not waiting on state numbers. We have a number that we can kind of build our budget upon. But again, through the work of the finance department and projecting, we feel that applying a small fraction of the circuit breaker funds is something that we could do without too much of a risk. And then lastly, utilization of SOR 3. So again, we have one-time SOR 3 funds that we can offset some of our curriculum purchases. And again, if we did not have the SOR 3 funding, we would be looking at additional reductions. But the reality is we do, and we need to expend those funds by the end of fiscal year 24. So the next slide is what are the positions that were requested by the leadership team, principals, that are not included in the budget prioritized? So we shared this list with the school committee in December. The principals and the leadership team, the directors, did prioritize the positions that they requested. So this list reflects the prioritized positions. And the number one position that was prioritized, a special education teacher. The second was a social worker, school adjustment counselor, .5 FTE, speech and language pathologist, reading tutor. One of the things we are doing as a leadership team is having more conversations around these positions and continuing the dialogue and discussion around what are the priorities? I will share that when you, when you have four special education or multiple special education directors, assistant directors, it can skew the ranking. So now we need to sit down and have the conversations around, okay, what are the true priorities? But from the absolute ranking that we did, this is where those fell.
And is, sorry.
Sure, absolutely.
Is that through vote? I know it's like they submit, they have a class.
Yeah, so it was a Google form.
Okay.
And every member of our leadership team had a chance to go in and rank those. So, but again, if you look at our student support leadership team, you have three, four assistant directors and Marie Allen, so we can skew. So what we need to do is just have a sit-down conversation and talk about each of these and continue their work. We started those conversations, but we still need some more time. So in terms of instructional materials that were originally in the FY24 preliminary budget, that we shifted to SOR 3. So the SEL curriculum, middle school science, and then the middle school and elementary math curriculum, and then student staff devices. So again, we're trying to shift purchases of materials and supplies to the grant because we do not want to create a structural deficit by adding positions and then when the money is no longer available to us, having to try and find that money to continue funding those positions. What also is included in the budget, and this is a change from the preliminary budget. So the revised preliminary budget does include ELA K-5 curriculum and professional development, which is an increase of a little under $150,000. This was a conversation the operational budget subcommittee had and also a discussion that the committee had at the December meeting. Dr. Reinhorn is pursuing every grant possible. There's no shortage of grants. We did learn of a grant to actually potentially offset this cost by 50%. And so she is sharpening her grant pencil, which I think it's, you've used most of.
It's pretty sharp.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Well, actually, it's not very sharp. It's very dull. I've been using it a lot.
So again, this is an example where more time, you know, the next couple of weeks, we will learn whether we have received that grant and we can then think about reducing the overall cost of this particular curriculum to budget. And then not included, not included in the budget, but we're looking at other grants that we have, specifically state grants or federal grants. And we're confident that we will fund the ST math K-5. Actually, Dr. Reinhorn was on another call about a grant to fund this purchase. And then math screening, diagnostic assessment and the ELD kindergarten curriculum. So we actually think we found money in FY23 budget to fund the ELD kindergarten curriculum. So we're moving forward to making sure that we purchase these important instructional materials. And then just lastly, as I shared, in December, looking at the historical appropriated budget amounts, I think Roger mentioned this was not really an apples-to-apples comparison. But over the past many years, I think the school committee has voted on educationally sound and fiscally responsible budgets that I think that serve the students well and helps incrementally grow our program and our experience for students. And the revised preliminary budget compared to appropriated budgets, and again, is about a percent and a half over what we were last year. Also note that during the pandemic, one of the unintended outcomes of bringing in budgets that were about 2% is that it's also compounding. So when you have budget increases that are at or about inflation, you're really, you know, the next year, you're not building on a larger base where you typically may have had if you were in a different economic climate. So yet, if you had a fiscal year 21, we had an appropriated budget increase of 4%, we'd be building upon a greater base. So it's one of those kind of compounding impacts of moving budgets forward.
As you can see from 2000, fiscal year 2019.
Correct.
I mean, that boom, the baseline. Unless you're looking at this graph, you look at these 2% and depending what happens this year.
Yep.
Imagine what will happen next year.
Yep. And I think that one of the changes, significant changes, is the inflation. So if you look at the budget increases over, you know, the past five or six years and you look at inflation, our budget increases kind of mirrored inflationary increases. Where at this point in time, the inflation and even the revised, the revised preliminary budget, there is a gap, you know, there's a gap of about 3%. So the impact of a dollar, the purchasing power of a dollar is significantly impacted by inflation, which is impacting our budget moving forward. So that is the revised preliminary budget. There remains a tremendous amount of work moving forward. Tomorrow, again, I mentioned that we are meeting with some of the town leaders and town board chairs to kind of, again, continue the partnership. My recommendation to the committee is to engage in another operational budget subcommittee to continue to have more conversations. We as a leadership team have much more work to do, sitting down and having conversations. And lastly, the finance team is continuing to sharpen their pencils.
I'm going to borrow Stephanie's.
Borrow Stephanie's pencil, our pencil sharpener. And really making sure that we are bringing forth a recommended budget to the school community in February that really helps build and grow our program, which also is within kind of the constraints of the town's economic climate. And at that point, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good to her.
Thank you. Thank you for this. That was great. So where in the, so the slide that says the fiscal year 2024 budget drivers, I think that means like budget increase drivers, right? And then for the preliminary budget, it said it was the out-of-district collaborative tuitions were going to increase by $609,000, and I think that got brought down to $9,000. Is that the 14%? And if so, how are we, how are we covering that?
So that is the 14%, but we are looking to utilize the FY24 circuit breaker money to offset the budget.
Oh, because we have that.
We have that year where we can.
That's right. Okay. Okay. Gotcha.
And we've also, sorry, we've also been working with Marie and her team and have gone through the list. And there were some students that were potentials that we're now see, you know, as we're getting later in the year and meetings are happening, we're finding out more about some of these potentials or some, more of these cases and seeing some shifts in those tuitions as well.
Okay. Okay. Were you going to say something else?
No, I was just going to echo, you know, as we move forward in the year, we have better data. So we sit down every other week with the support services team and we look at our out-of-district placements and also potential out-of-district placements. And as we move into December and January, we're better able to project where we are. But this still can change.
But you're talking about new placements out or students who would be coming back to the, because I, my understanding was that anybody who's out of district, it's an additional 14%.
That is accurate.
Of that. So that would be 609.
That's, that is, the 609 includes the 14% increase.
Yeah.
But also, at the time, included a few cases.
Gotcha.
Where we were watching very closely.
Okay.
And we have better information at this point in time.
Okay.
But I will share that this also can change. We can have a student move in for, you know, apparent request of out-of-district placement that we weren't anticipating.
I was forgetting about that circuit breaker, circuit breaker. So, okay, that's, that's great. And then the thought of half, of the four, okay. Is that, that must be tied to some sort of dollar value amount? Because four, I mean, if you have four of one group or four, you know, so what? Because four, I mean, if you have four of one group or four, you know, so what's the dollar amount that that represents?
So the, I think it's a little under two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred?
So it's a little under a percent.
Okay. And, but those could be any positions, right? They wouldn't have to be educator positions.
Correct.
Okay, so.
And I think when we think about reducing the budget, we all start with supplies and materials.
Yep.
And then we start looking, then secondary people. And then we use the criterion, you know, what's going to have the least impact of students.
Yeah, okay.
And I just want to reiterate, it's early.
Yeah.
Even though it's January.
Right.
And we have a lot of work to do to try to get a sense of what the impact would be, what those positions are. And partly, it's getting better enrollment data at the K level, for example. Looking at class size, moving classes to the next grade level and seeing what the staffing levels look like.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it'll be interesting because I looked back at last January's materials and for projection, we had one fifteen projected to the fall and it actually went up to one forty. So I don't know exactly what that one fifteen was based on, if that was also based on census numbers and perhaps.
We had better.
It's really going to be a smaller class. I don't know.
Yeah, so I did have a conversation with Principal Ryan and the census numbers for K were significantly lower. However, census isn't.
Not right.
All of them accurate predictor. So we're watching it very closely. I think also behind those four positions are people. And the last, I think we're mindful that we don't want to be too specific around what the impact might be if we're not sure. We don't want to raise the alarm with our educators if it's not necessary.
And so I guess my last question slash request, I guess, or suggestion is that if some of what we're doing to reduce the budget increase drivers is to use S R funds, I think part of this perhaps should be a discussion about what were we going to spend the S R funds on that we are no longer going to be able to use those funds for? Because that, those are just going to fill some kind of important needs. And if we can't do that anymore, then I think we should have like a full picture of, okay, now we're going to request a smaller increase, but the money's, you know, we're not going to be able to accomplish everything that way. So I think maybe we fill this in with what's going and what we're keeping.
And then the other thing that I was doing, or I think, you know, I agree with your recommendation that we should sit on this for a little while and see if some of the grants, you know, come through or where we should apply them. But then, so on the subcommittee, we'll kind of, we'll also look at, okay, so what if we do bring in one of the things that are not in the budget? And when I say things, I mean resources. And what does that bring our potential budget increase to? Just playing, just toggling a few of them, you know, it could just be the difference of moving from three point nine to four point one or four point oh two. And I think it would help us to say, well, is it worth it? The impact that this teacher could have on an entire school, you know, or, you know, a large population of the school, maybe we would want to present that or not. So I wasn't able to come to that decision now, but I think it would be something that's helpful for us to mill through a little bit more.
So can I use an example?
Yes.
So if you, if you think about a one percent increase of, you know, two hundred and twenty thousand approximately, the four teachers equals about that amount. If we look at enrollment, for example, and we find out that we can meet class size with two less classroom teachers, that's an opportunity to look at, can those classroom teachers take on potentially a different role and fill some of the other positions that we were hoping to fill? So I think that's why time is helpful for us because we have better data and we'll be able to have those conversations in the weeks ahead.
I mean, we're going in the right direction, right? From where we started from November and December, we just want to make sure we get the right balance of what we're asking for, for the ask that we're going to put out to the community.
I think for the committee, the decision is, you know, what are you asking us to move forward in terms of recommended budget? Are you asking us to bring in a three percent to try to stay at that four percent? Or are you asking us to now look at what would a five percent budget increase look like? So in terms of the work that we're doing with the town, we'll have a better sense of, again, the town's economic picture. I will share that kind of the initial conversation and Roger correct me if I'm wrong, it is going to be a difficult budget year for all involved, not just the school department.
That was kind of what I was going to bring up is maybe we shouldn't think in a vacuum just about our budget because there's a lot of big things coming up, like there's the town budget, there's going to be a lot of big asks at town meeting. It's going to not just be us, it's going to be the high school with the, with the new fields and everything.
Sports complex.
The sports complex is going to be a huge ask. The town itself is going to have a huge ask with their budgets. There's going to be a lot of increases being asked for. So I just want to keep that in mind. You know, myself and just kind of, you know, as a whole, is we're thinking about the budget. I hate the, I mean, we all hate the idea of any reductions at all.
No.
You know, and I think, you know, my first thought when we, when you said, you know, reducing staff, I'm like, well, those, those students are going to move up and that, that's not going to change the classroom sizes. So what if we need those two extra teachers in the first grade for all those students? So, you know, that was my initial thought with that, but, you know, also, but I also need to, you know, we need to think about that. Like, we're not the only ones asking. So it's going to be a tough year.
Katuro.
Does somebody else have questions? I have, I have one more. So the ELA K to five curriculum and professional development at one forty-four, so that was not in the last budget?
Correct.
Okay, so how urgent is that since it's sort of a new addition? And now it's coupled with the thought of it's almost the same as the, so is it that, you know, maybe can we speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So in the previous presentation, it was there, but not in the budget. So it was in the list of things that were not included. And it was the discussion with the committee saying, based on what we're hearing, this feels like it's important, can you move it into the budget?
That sounds right.
So it's not that it like appeared between now and then.
Right, right.
It's been a longstanding conversation. The, there has been ongoing work. We brought in the lower grades Hegarty and Project Read, an update to our Project Read curriculum, which are around our phonemic awareness and our phonics program to start updating some of the work we are doing in the area of reading. And that has allowed us the opportunity for professional development, along with the introduction of DIBELS as a literacy screener that is now K through five. And we have a new literacy screener called PELLY in the preschool. So with the work that's been done around these literacy screeners, phonemic awareness and phonics programs, the teachers, I think, have expressed a lot of interest and there is, I think, a real sense of momentum. And it varies from grade level to grade level, but a sense of urgency for better, more updated curriculum resources to support the work that we've been moving forward. I think there are times right now where people are saying, I know what I need to do, but I don't always have quite the materials I need in order to do it. So I think we're, I think it's, it feels like a pretty high priority and we have been working together as a teaching and learning team to look at all of the different areas in curriculum that we are trying to move forward and not move all of them at once. And we sort of intentionally moved ELA to the front burner while we kept math and some other things on the back burner where things feel more stable. So I think that was clear enough.
Yes, I.
So I'll just add to that the one forty-four, four fifty is the ceiling. So the work that we're doing again as grant writing, but also working with the publishers around what would a phase, could we phase it in? Could we do year one, grade one, two? So looking at all those options and understanding what the impact of those options would be for the different choices. And that's the work Stephanie and her team are doing.
And the one forty-four, that's less than it was at the last presentation too, right? Or was it? No, it was the same.
I think that's the same.
It's the same.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
All right. So.
Thank you.
So with that presentation, that conclusion of the superintendent's report.
So there is no educational policy tonight on the agenda. We've got two policies that are in your packets that have been, they're just really for distribution, which is the, I think a couple of these were kind of just a little bit of cleanup and maybe to correct a couple of things that were pointed wrong. But one is the kind of school committee meetings be to twenty and then school committee meetings be to ninety. So they're, they're there in your packet. Personnel items? I'm sorry, please, I'm sorry.
One of the ones, it's not listed here, but something for the policy committee to look at was the, we have a policy on disciplinary action.
What?
Disciplinary action.
Okay.
That, I guess I just wanted to like re-suggest it for review. I had shared it via email that their, I mean, Massachusetts is looking at revising their overall law on that. And so let's just see how we tie ours to it. So I'll bring it up again, I guess, for the.
Well, is this, is this a policy that we're also trying to have as a common policy throughout, throughout the district?
Through N S B A, yeah.
Right, right.
So in the joint subcommittee policy review, that's where I had shared the request for review. So I'll just, I'll bring it up again when we talk about what to talk about in the next agenda.
So the request for review from that subcommittee?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, because it hasn't been brought forward to the school committee yet.
Right.
Anything else? That makes sense. I'm sorry, so the personnel report?
So in your packet is a distribution of the personnel report. I believe this is one of the shorter personnel reports that we've seen in some time. And I think just a general comment that we are seeing kind of an improvement in the labor market and we're in a pretty good place in terms of hiring positions. But something we're monitoring very closely.
In the communications, we have the, an email?
Yes.
Speak to that.
Yeah, so we are, so there's no shortage of state and federal audits that our student support services department experiences on an annual basis. So they actually, Marie Allen will be presenting in the months ahead, the targeted performance review, our tiered focus monitoring, it changes some tiered focus monitoring audit that they are beginning and will present some information. But in your packet is just a letter also around an audit that happens every year around whether our special education under Part B of the I D E A meets the requirements. And we received an audit report that basically says we are meeting the required requirements, which is.
Good news, good news. Questions on that? Letter, I think a simple letter out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three actions on three minutes. Are we looking to approve for release or for, to retain the executive session minutes at this point?
Uh, retain, please.
Okay. So I'm going to just roll this into one ask. I look for a motion to approve the special open meeting minutes of December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and the open meeting minutes of December fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. And to approve the executive session minutes of December fourteenth, two thousand two to be retained. So moved or?
So moved.
Moved by Kamali?
Second.
Second by Jen? Any discussion? In the packet, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Agenda items for next month? I mean, I have, I have a small add, but anyone have anything they'd like to put on at this point in time? Yes, Katuro?
I'm wondering if we could have a, I realize, given the budget, this adding world language is probably not in the cards for next year, but just maybe an update on any analysis or thoughts that has been done since we talked about it last.
Sure, and just, and just, you know, I know that the public would be potentially asked to this, so we have, so far we've got this. Student support services programmatic review, we've got the MCAS presentation, the discussion on creating an inclusive community. As I understand, all the principals will be attending the February meeting. And then we've got the recommended budget presentation for fiscal year twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. And when we just added, I guess we need to deal with the capital item of the parking lot also, since we just agreed to do that. Anything else at this point? Don't hear anything else at this point. All right. Public comment? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. We will, I guess I'd like to hear a motion that we adjourn this meeting to move into an executive session from which we will not return to the open meeting. And that's going to take, if there's a motion in the second, that's going to take a local vote.
So moved.
So moved by Jen?
Second.
I guess I saw Jess. There's another tie, there's a lot of ties tonight. Second by Jess. A local vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
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 Katuro? And I vote yes. So we return, thank you.